All right, well, let's move on. I will introduce our day chair for today. Our day chair is Christine Dennis. Christine is a dynamic author, mother, sister, grandmother, aunt, and motivational speaker, and a people person. She is the founder and executive director of The Broken Strong Woman, a nonprofit organization advocating on behalf of victims of domestic violence. Christine holds a bachelor's degree in social work from Metropolitan State University in St. Paul, and a master's degree in social work from the University of Minnesota. She is currently enrolled in the Doctor of Theology at the Spiritual Life Bible College in Brooklyn Center, Minnesota. Christine has a passion for helping people change their lives. She is fulfilled when others are happy and safe. She currently lives, I have here, she currently lives in Minnesota, USA. But Christine can maybe tell us what city she's in with her mother, her fiance, her children, and grandchildren. Christine, thank you for being our day chair today. And it looks like you're frozen.
I'm muted. Oh, mute me. Okay. All right. Thank you. Good morning, everyone. Good morning. So I'm in Brooklyn Park. Can you guys hear me?
Yep, we can hear you now.
Yes, I'm in Brooklyn Park. What's going on?
There we go, Christine. I think you're on.
So should I go ahead and introduce him? What am I doing?
Yep, go ahead and introduce Adam. That'd be great.
Okay. Adam joined the Minneapolis Downtown Council after serving as Director of Government Affairs for the North Central States Region Council of Cappinters, NCS R O C C, where he spent over six years leading legislative and communication efforts across the Midwest. Prior to his time with Cappinters, Adam led the Metropolitan Council as Chair, where he directed the agency regional planning, committee development, and transit system to the seven council metro area. He served as a Metropolitan Council member, representing Minneapolis for four years, and later served as the Minneapolis Planning Commissioner. He also recently co-chaired Major Jacob Fair Inclusive Economics Recovery Work Group. Adam has spent over 20 years of his career in and around the construction trades. Starting in the field as a heavy equipment operator, he is currently the Vice Chair of Jobs of Minnesota, a labor and business organization, and is a founding board member of Twin Cities Housing Alliance. Adam Hales from Wilmer, Minnesota, and currently lives in Little Canada, Minnesota, with his wife Abby and three children, James, Carolina, and Jack. He is a passionate sports fan and golfer, and a van reader and cook, a volunteer with a youth sports coach, and enjoys a summer weekend at the farm he grew up in in Weston, Minnesota, or the family cabin in Lake Wisconsin. Welcome, Adams.
Good morning, everybody. Thank you for that nice introduction, Christine. Thanks, Scott, for having me. Great to bump into you last week and talk a little bit about this meeting. Thank you, Hannah, for bailing me out and sending me the Zoom link this morning, five minutes ago. I realized in my calendar, but I did not have it. So luckily, Hannah and I are office mates. She's up a few floors from me here in Young Quinland. But so we connected here this morning even before jumping on. But it's great to be here. It's a fun morning and fun week to be here. I was just on WCCEO actually talking with Anita about all the things happening downtown. So maybe I'll start there because it's a really exciting week. It's the one week per quarter that Target is in the office. So significant a bump in downtown activity just from their employee base being largely in person. U S Bank made their announcement over the weekend about a three-day, going from a two-day in the office to a three-day work week, which is exciting progress and something we're constantly both monitoring and advocating for here with our members and the other big employers downtown. And then on top of that, there's some significant convention activity and visitor activity with the Big Ten Championship for the women this week and the men's next week. The hotel occupancy is exceptional for the week, which is great. And just for those that have been around downtown a long time, I know that this week is feeling like a little bit more like it was pre-pandemic. And that's what we're kind of constantly striving for is what progress can we make day in and day out, and steadily returning back to what I don't like to describe as a normal, because I think there's going to be a new normal, redefine normal. Kind of get into some of that. But it's a real pleasure to be here. Super excited to share a few thoughts about the job. I've been here a little over three months now, so maybe I know a little bit more than if I had this, you know, had the speaking engagement back in early part of the year or late part of 2023. But still certainly, you know, one of my staff members introduced me yesterday at our program. It's the new president and CEO. I'll probably feel new for a while because my predecessor, Steve Kramer, was here for 10 years. And frankly, probably 10 years, it felt like 20 in terms of kind of bouncing back from the years 2020 and 2021. But first, I'll start by paying some major respect to him. Steve did an outstanding job. He led this organization in an incredible way and through some tough times, and someone that I worked with closely, which is what appealed to me about coming to both an organization like the Downtown Council and D I D, as well as having that experience working with him on issues like public safety, transit, economic development, housing. We all served on the Twin Cities Housing Alliance Board together and worked against rent control. But maybe I'll start by talking a little bit of what I see as the opportunities, strengths, the assets that we both have downtown and what's right in front of us, and then talk a little bit about the challenges. That's kind of how it was framed up to me. And then certainly want to open it up and make sure there's time for some questions and discussion. But to me, the strengths and the assets are, I think, very, very clear, which is an engaged civic city that's very proud of our city, even though sometimes maybe in a Midwestern Scandinavian way, we don't always wear it out of sleeve or fly as high as we ought to. But there is a significant outpouring of support, both for downtown specifically and the city, for us to figure out what can we do to rebuild our reputation around the state and around the country. And I think that sort of that comes through to me every day, every week that I've been here, continues to be a big point of emphasis. One of the things I really wanted to do when I started is, and my experience is a little bit more either regional or broader than just the city, is how do we bring more of those resources to bear? How do we get the governor really engaged in what's happening downtown? How do we get the legislature engaged in it? How do we broaden our constituency? How do we get other groups, organization, people, decision makers paying attention to downtown and understanding that they're, the future of what they're, frankly, their bottom line or their success is going to be tied to the success of downtown? We need to figure out a way that we can connect with you. There's a lot of reasons for that. There's the social element, as far as I can tell. If we have a downtown that's hollowed out and unsafe, and people don't want to go there, and it's not vibrant, that's going to trickle out and impact every community. That's going to hurt the rest of the metropolitan area. It's going to affect the state in a lot of ways. If we have a commercial real estate market that lags other downtowns, that's going to affect the property tax base in the city and the county, the school district, and other entities around the state. It's not just going to affect just the city, or it's not just going to affect just downtown. It's going to affect everybody. How do we continue to talk about that? The other, you know, significant strengths and assets here is, as a downtown council, we're not just the business community. We get painted that way a lot of times by the city council, by people that either aren't fans of the downtown council or want to create some sort of, some sort of, I don't know how to best describe this diplomatically, but some sort of boogeyman that they can run against politically or make into a pinata. And they've done that by calling us the big corporations or the downtown business interests. But that's not what the downtown council is. The downtown council represents the sports teams, we represent the cultural groups, we represent the Hennepin Theater Trust, Orchester Hall, all kinds of important interests beyond just companies and corporations and for-profit entities. We have a lot of nonprofit members. And how do we think about redefining kind of where we are in the discourse here in the city? Is it an important thing for me to think about? We are oftentimes leading the charge on business issues because that's an important constituency for us. So we see something like this Uber and Lyft issue through the city council or the labor standards, where we are going to get engaged. I'm not suggesting we wouldn't. But I also just think it's important for us to be known, not just as the business group. There's lots of business groups who want to work closely with them. That's an important part of it too. But again, just to come back to what our assets are, incredibly successful sports teams that are community-driven, focused, some of the best arts and theater around the country, some of the best dining hospitality around the country. What are the ways that we can continue to promote that within our region and the national team? What are some of the things that we don't do or could be doing better? Creating a group like Minnesota Sports and Events is an important thing. Then all of a sudden, we're hosting these events like we're doing this week. We're creating a national brand for ourselves that shows that we're bouncing back. Another thing I've heard about from chefs directly is, why doesn't Minnesota have Michelin stars? This is something that in the culinary world is a big deal. It draws national tourism dollars. It actually attracts, you know, a wider audience than you might imagine. And it's something that we just haven't spent time or energy to think about. We have worked with the State Department of Tourism on these sorts of issues. So how can we think about recasting ourselves, playing to our strengths, which I think is something that I've spent a lot of time and energy. Now, I guess I'll maybe pivot to some of the challenging issues. None of them, I think, will surprise you much. It's how do we continue to return to office? There's a lot of talk about how Minnesota lags and Minneapolis lags in this department. And I think that some of the data is a little skewed based on how they measure what our downtown footprint is, that actually our downtown district does pretty well when you think about the placer data that we watch, the cell phone data, people moving around, that we continue to do better, and we're solidly in a position where, you know, the Tuesday through Thursday work week has become much more regular. But there is a longer-term impact in looking at some people on the screen that I know are dealing with specifically of what's going to happen in the future of commercial real estate. It's going to change. There's just no question about it that remote work has impacted us. And I think maybe a year or two ago, apologize if my audio is breaking up. Oh, I don't know if I can project a little louder or speak more in the microphone here. But issues such as what the lease terms, the real estate space that's available, what, how much space companies need, what they're going to do in the future is an important issue for us. But it's also for me a value proposition of how can we continue to be one of the most unique downtowns around that people want, be a destination that people want to locate their businesses to and grow them. The other thing I'll talk about quickly is safety, because it's first and foremost, it's always just, to me, it's foundational to the social contract of what we should be doing, providing an environment for workers, for business, for everybody in the community. And we have challenges when it comes to resources, and we also just have this challenge where the mayor has one particular perspective on safety, the council has a different one. How do we bridge those gaps? How do we keep the police department engaged and focused on community policing? I think that there's been significant progress made on that front. We are particularly involved in that through the Downtown Improvement District. For those that don't know, we actually have a social worker program that we work with Hennepin County on. We have obviously our ambassadors that people see and know, but we are an entity, an extension of M P D. That doesn't work if we don't have a strong police department. That doesn't work if Inspector Peterson doesn't have enough officers, or he's having to call other precincts to make sure that we have enough people to fill his shifts downtown. So the balance of the presence that people expect to see, and then also the community engagement that goes along with that. We had a program yesterday, I think a couple of people I recognize were actually there, John, and he was there with Commissioner Todd Barnett. And he's doing a great job. He has a tough job in front of him. But what his point is, we focus so much on the police department. We don't think about community policing. We don't think about emergency response. We don't think about resourcing these other parts of the, what drives safety outcomes in a more successful way. We're going to continue to struggle with things such as homelessness and addiction. Well, what's the best way to approach it? It's usually not to have the police be the last line of defense that are interacting with some of the other social parts of our city. Housing and residential, the residential growth here for people that either attended our annual meeting or paid attention to some of the news around it. We reported that we are on the doorstep of 70,000 people in the downtown area, which is an incredible accomplishment. We tried to double the population from 35,000 to 70 in our, in our last 10-year vision plan. We didn't quite achieve that goal, but we came really close. And now we want to continue to think about how does the residential population grow here? One, it shows that there is a significant, I think, misunderstanding at times of what downtown is. There's really kind of five neighborhoods, or as RT Ryback and Minneapolis Foundation likes to call now, five villages of downtown, from North Loop, the Mill District, East Town, Loring Park, and Central Business District. They're all a little bit different. People wouldn't be moving in here. There wouldn't be growth in residential population if it was an unsafe place to live or, you know, it wasn't a vibrant downtown area to be close to. So I think that more that we can continue to lean into housing, that's something that our 2035 plan is grappling with pretty intensely, which is if the ceiling number of where the workforce is going to be employees downtown has kind of fallen a little bit because of that new normal of what commercial real estate looks like, what the new day-to-day work week looks like for employees. If that number's come down, we're not going to have 215,000 workers downtown every day. How can we supplement that with the growth in the residential population and continue to focus on housing opportunities? Sometimes that's going to be a challenging project, like a commercial and residential conversion. Sometimes that's going to be thinking about just redevelopment opportunities in certain parts of town. What does that look like? And then the other big challenge is, and I've already alluded to it a little bit, is with a city that at times can be so divided between the council and the mayor, how do we either work with or rally political support to get around, to come around to one vision? That's one challenge that I'm thinking about in a big way right now for our downtown 2035 plan. We do not want to have a vision that comes out, and if one person is in elected office, it's taken seriously. And if another person is in office, it's not taken seriously. How do we try to reach the breadth of the political extremes at times that it feels like is the pendulum that swings in our city? You know, so that means building relationships with people that we maybe don't agree with on everything, but we still try to unite around some common ideas. That means trying to be the bridge at times between the mayor and the city council, and it's not always an easy thing to navigate. But that, you know, both on big picture issues like public safety, where they have just fundamental disagreements for rent control, where the mayor is strongly opposed to it, and there are certain city council members that really want to see us do that. I just caution the council and policymakers that we can't continue to put Minneapolis on an island compared to the rest of the region, and frankly, even at times the rest of the country. It's just going to continue to hurt us both financially and reputationally. And so you'll see me speak out about those sorts of things and see the downtown council be really involved as well. But what we're trying to get to is some consensus. Consensus can be hard. It doesn't mean it's impossible. We're not going to stop trying. But it's an important part of what we, what we're doing on a day-to-day basis. And maybe that's a good place to pause and put up for some questions, because I'm sure in this group you have plenty of thoughtful questions and ideas. I guess maybe even before I do that, I'll say one last thing, because I said this at the end of the meeting, I don't want to continue saying this. We're not here as an entity to say, here's what downtown's going to be. Now go forth and carry on the vision. We're also an important sounding board, and I'm a big listener. That's something I do. It's also a question of how do we take in the input from the community and reflect that back on what you all are seeing and hearing and want to see in your downtown. Revitalization of downtown or reimagining downtown isn't going to be a spectator sport. It's going to take every entity, every company, every individual, people that are really committed to the city to help make it happen. And so I thank you for your interest in hearing me out today and forward to working with you to reimagine downtown.
Great. Thank you, Adam. I have a question. So as we get more and more workers back to downtown, which I, you know, we experienced yesterday with the convention, with Target coming back and U S Bank, are we looking to, hoping to have more lunch places come back and more of that, what we had before the pandemic returning? Is the downtown council working on those types of issues at all?
We are from a couple of standpoints. So general activations on Nicolat on Tuesday and Thursday are the two days that we've identified as best days to continue to be active there. Tuesdays being the day when we do the exchange on Nicolat. Thursdays, we did our downtown Thursday programming last year. How do we get into a mix of food trucks, vendors, other sort of activities out in the mall to create that energy? You know, this is, this is the quondary of, it's sort of a chicken and egg problem, which is if you're a business, you're not going to locate either in Skyway or on a storefront until there's activity. And how do you drive that activity but to have some of these retail opportunities or lunch opportunities there? We also have a chameleon shops program too, which is focused on retail. We have seven shops around the city that where we work with the building owner to provide either reduced rent or rent that's a percentage of state versus just the normal rent model to help get incubate entrepreneurs and get businesses growing. Some of them have been really successful. Others of them have struggled a little bit depending on their location and what their, what their market is exactly. But we are focused on it, and we need to continue to stay focused on it, continue to be active and promoting downtown as a place to be. I think part of that is the big picture stuff of what's our reputation and what's, what's people's perception of coming downtown? So we do a mix of marketing to people around the city that you would hope to come down, you know, I guess maybe either suburban families or people that come down periodically. How do we continue to market to people and get them? If you used, if you used to come downtown pre-pandemic once or twice a month, and now you just come down here once or twice a year, how do we get you back into that more, you know, regular visitor?
Great. Other questions for Adam?
Adam, okay, this is Jim Eaton. I happened to have had a relationship long time ago with Deluxe Check when they were in St. Paul, and it was a big news when they, when they announced they were moving to downtown Minneapolis. Could you give me an update on, have they, have they come back since COVID? Are, what, what kind of numbers are you seeing in that organization? Do you have any other companies, maybe you can, that involves this information that you're pursuing and trying to attract to, to the opportunities that might be in downtown Minneapolis?
Yeah. Thanks for that question, Jim. I haven't met Deluxe Checking yet. They're on my list to see soon. So it seems I have more specific information for them. I'll let you know, but maybe just share with you what I do know, which is 11 of our top 15 employers have either a two- or a three-day a week return to work policy, which is, which is promising. It's good news that the ones that do not, I think would surprise you. And we're still trying to figure out how to most effectively lead into the city of Minneapolis and Hennepin County. Some parts of the city are back more than others. Hennepin has been the hardest to lean into. And then just generally, I'd say there's a couple of sectors that I've met with, engineering, design firms, and architects, and law firms. And both of those sectors are almost universally backed, most of them five days a week, which is positive. And I think what we've been trying to tell people, and I think this message is starting to get out there more broadly in the six months, is if you're starting a company or if you're starting off as an employee in a company, and you're 25, 30 years old, just getting your career started, what better way to build your career than to be there in person? How do you, how do you think about building your career and your network and the mentoring it takes to grow as an employee if you're doing that remotely? You need to be in the office to both learn from colleagues, to collaborate better. I mean, all the reasons that I think most of us probably go to work every day, that, to me, it's common sense. But to people who haven't worked in that environment, it's, it's almost like we have to do a reeducation for young workers. And in some instances, I have talked to employers and they say, that's the segment of my workforce that wants to come back. The young employees want to, and the people that have been here a while are kind of comfortable working from home as much as they're able to.
I see Anna and Sean have a question. Anna, let's start with you.
I'd say Sean had his hand up first. I'll let him go first.
Okay, Sean.
Adam, thank you so much for joining us in your previous work as well. So I'm very curious on issues such as the lift. I will say this, for people that maybe don't go downtown or haven't re-engaged with downtown. Sydney and I walk downtown all the time. We walk down to ballgames. We walk down to concerts. We live over on 24th and Humboldt. So we cut across almost the entirety of downtown. We really don't have any problems. I will say most of the time we take a Lyft home because after we walk for an hour and 15 minutes to get there, we're sometimes ready for a Lyft on the way home. But, but we, we do it very frequently, and it's not a big deal, you know. It's still, Loring Park is still beautiful, and it's still nice. You still can sit, stop at great restaurants, Eli's, and a bunch of new Genoy, and new restaurants are opening up. So I will say that. Go ahead and go back downtown. My question is, how do you, with inadequate data, take a position? And you referenced one specifically that I think we have anecdotal data, but we have organizations that are not transparent in delivering data, and that specifically is Lyft and Uber. So you have these organizations that anecdotally, when the drivers talk, the drivers give their take on what's happening. We, it's definitely changed, right? And it's dynamic pricing, and it's changed, and there's various pieces that are really hard to get your arms around in a way that, that you can even take a position. Because from my perspective, of course, I want the drivers to be paid fairly. Of course I do. I use Lyft. We use Lyft for convenience. We use Lyft to go to the airport. We, we want to reduce congestion and things like that. But, you know, really, how do you take that position when you're not getting what I would call robust enough data to even make the call? Or maybe, maybe you are. Maybe I'm wrong. Maybe you are getting the data.
Yeah, I'll push back a little bit on that. I am getting data from Lyft. I haven't seen data from Uber. But I also know both Uber and Lyft have shared more data with the state of Minnesota than they've done with any other government entity that went to the governor's task force that he hasn't even, with the groups. There's a mix of drivers, the companies, his commissioner of labor, who's a good friend of mine, was involved in it. So I've talked with her a little bit about this to make sure I'm not too far out there. I, look, I'm not somebody who wants to go to bat for companies if they're not doing well by their workers either. I think there actually is slight discrepancy, there's a time to describe discrepancy between Uber and Lyft. Lyft has come recently and pledged their drivers that 70% of their fare back to the drivers in some form or way. They have voluntarily got some of the, I think, negative, you know, the decertifying, the decertifying functions that happen when drivers suddenly find that they can't drive anymore. So I've seen some movement from the company side on the front. I guess my bigger message, and Jonathan Weinhegen and I are going to speak more publicly about this today, is that the city ought to pause and see what the state does, that it's much better policy to look at statewide and rather than to just have the city have a policy. And from my understanding, this work group got within, you know, inches of coming to some agreement where the drivers would be paid significantly more than they are now, and the companies would make some big concessions. And then all of a sudden, the agreement just kind of dissipated because they didn't want to have a deal with the state. They wanted to see how much better we could get at the city level. And I just think that that has much more reputational harm to our city than anything else. I'm not, I'm not somebody who wants Uber and Lyft to get away with exploiting workers or doing things that they shouldn't do. Anyone that knows my background knows that I'm pretty passionate about that sort of thing too. So it's a, it's been a delicate balancing act for sure. But I just think, I think the city should tread a little bit more cautiously into this policy trend than they have. And that's, that's going to be kind of the tone of the message that we take.
So as you're saying that, you said Lyft has been very forthright and had made some commitments relative to the drivers. And I would expect that 70%, and, but even in that conversation, we're saying that they weren't, that they, they were playing around with the app. They were, you know, reducing the amount the drivers were getting. And you also said that Uber has not been as forthcoming with their data. So.
It's not with me. I just haven't spoken with them as much.
Okay. So I do think it's a very important issue for the city and the state, and a statewide agreement would be fine with me. But I do think it's a very important issue when we talk about the transportation factor. Because, let's face it, parking downtown can be a pain. So it's sometimes, the ride sharing can be a, can be a good workaround for people that, that want to get door-to-door. In winter time, you want to get a lot closer than maybe parking two, three blocks away. So I'll look forward to your continued work on that, and thank you for that.
Yeah, and if I could just add one more point, you know, I have a really significant labor background. The issue here at times is. Uh, the issue here at times is being an employee here, being an independent contractor. And so just the model, how their employment system works is so different. Uh, part of my message to some of the drivers has been if you want to drive for a living, you should really go work at Metro Transit or go work at agency that does pay you a certain salary, have benefits, has those sort of things. The independent contractor model specifically set up for somebody to have an after-hours second income or have some sort of flexibility. So some of the drivers want to have it both ways, where they want to have the flexibility of a business owner, but they also want the security and, and wages, benefits of an employee. And that, that's sort of bigger, that's a really big picture labor question for people to work through uh, that I think gets lost sometimes in this, this discussion. Uh, so I just, I, I will raise that to say it's, it's a really big complicated issue and I think it's not as comp- it's not as simple as workers aren't being paid fairly enough and you need to make sure that they, they get some sort of percentage of the system. Now, again, that being said, Uber and Lyft need to do better and I think they're feeling that pressure, which is a good thing. Hopefully we can uh, figure out a system that works for the drivers, works for the people that need the rides and works for, for the city too.
Thank you, Adam. I have Anna and then Greg, Anna.
Great, I just wanted to make a couple of quick comments. One, I wanted to let everyone know that our Rotary Club is well represented at the downtown council. Both Jim Boss and I are both board members and executive committee members. So we get to grab Adam's ear sometimes and kind of look for things that we care about. We're super excited about the Rotary Convention coming up, et cetera. And I'm noticing now, I wanted to make an introduction, Adam, to Mary Pat Cumming, but I don't believe she's on the call anymore. She is the principal of the Fair School. And one of the things, just for the group to know, um, that downtown council, as Adam spoke to earlier, isn't just about the business community. We really want to make a downtown that works and welcomes everyone and thinking more broadly, more generationally. And so I think there's an opportunity to make that connection with the school. Um, so Adam, I will introduce you to Mary Pat at some other time. But I was wondering if perhaps you might, you mentioned the twenty thirty-five plan, but for those who aren't familiar with it, can you just give a quick description of what that is and what, what you're trying to accomplish with that twenty thirty-five plan?
Absolutely, uh, thanks for that question and glad to talk about it. The twenty thirty-five plan is essentially the vision, the guiding document for what we aspire to as a downtown. Uh, it's a, the downtown council has a rich history of doing these plans. In fact, I interacted with Steve Berg and the previous leadership of the downtown council when they did the twenty twenty-five plan. As we, at the Met Council, we're doing our, our regional framework plan at the same time, our ten plan. Uh, so the downtown council has done these sorts of progressive, forward-looking, forward-thinking plans for a long time. Uh, they, they take on big policy questions, big economic development questions, big questions about what downtown is supposed to be long-term. Uh, and the twenty twenty-five plan had sort of a top ten uh, list of things that they wanted to pursue, including uh, the renovation and remodel Nicolat Avenue, uh, keeping the Viking Stadium downtown. For those that don't remember, there was a significant debate at the time that they would locate somewhere else. A handful of other things that are a mix of aspirational and very realistic, from eliminating homelessness to first-class uh, transit and transportation network that is centered around downtown and some other sort of easy, almost, I shouldn't say easy, but easier things to look at and say, did we check that box? Did we accomplish that goal? And so we're in the process of doing that now. We've come up with a draft vision statement, which I'm excited about. And a lot of the people working on this over the last year or so are excited about it as well. And then taking that vision statement and putting it into signi- like significant goals, objectives, strategies to achieve those goals. The thing I think that separates our council from other groups that do these sorts of plans is implementation. And so once we have a more thought of fleshed out plan, you'll probably see me again and hear from the downtown council about these you can engage with us and with the plan and say, okay, I'm really committed to this issue uh, in a certain area on what the residential conversion to, the commercial conversion residential looks like. Or I'm really interested in this issue around public safety or transportation options. How can I plug into what the downtown council is doing? And we'll put together implementation committees that work on these things in a weekly, monthly fashion, which I'm really excited about.
Great, thanks, Greg.
Oh, you're on mute, Greg.
Yeah, there, now you've, Adam, you've touched on this a little bit, like, you know, you're mentioned like conversion or like, you know, commercial to residential, whatever. And I was just wondering if that's doable, I mean, you know, to balance all like, how much you collecting taxes? I know commercial property has generated better taxes than residential and well, I just feel that, I mean, with all this like spaces available, we could make use of it, to say it a better way. What do you, I just like to know what, does the city council have any plans for, I mean, having a balance between use for commercial and residential?
Sure, I think the, the good news is uh, in terms of thinking about the value of the property is not that much of the space is, will be eligible for residential remodel. There's certainly a certain percentage, depends on who you ask, which architect, engineer and, and design person. But I think the general thinking is it's anywhere from, you know, five to fifteen percent of the, the buildings and properties. I welcome Anna or Jim or anybody else to chime in if they have a thought. It's not a very percentage, I think, uh, but second of all, uh, I, I, you know, so in terms of getting to the residential goals we want to do, I think it's going to be much more new construction, isn't it? Be a bunch of, of retrofitting of old buildings. I do think a lot of thinking is being done about the commercial space. I'll give you an example of a couple of conversations I've had with some leaders in the last week or so. What's a, what, what's an entity or, or an organization that is in, is, is either potentially in a growth thing, growth mindset or thinking about needing more space and they're constrained by it now? Uh, potentially higher education, uh, is there a chance that we could lure some higher education institutions to have some downtown offices or some remote offices? Maybe from the east or west coast? Ask them to have a Minneapolis presence and think about focusing on a sector and industry that's, that's, that we're well-suited to, to recruit for. And that their industry's in the future, whether that's something like tech, uh, technology, AI, that's something like sustainability, resilience and, and climate. Uh, whether that's public safety, think about taking back the, the narrative that this is, you know, a challenging place for public safety or rather how we lean into it as a potential strength is be try to turn that area. Uh, other, other entities too that are sort of top of mind to me are, are med tech and, and anything healthcare related. Been talking a little bit with Hennepin Healthcare about the plans for their facility, longer-term vision for what's going to happen there. Uh, is there a chance for redevelopment to think, think through what some of the commercial real estate uh, interests could be long-term? I think that those are, those are some of the big questions we'll be grappling with in the twenty thirty-five plan for sure.
Thank you.
Well, Adam, thank you so much for joining us this morning. It's really been a pleasure to have you here. Uh, our traditional uh, speaker gift is to have you sign a book, which will be uh, given to a third grader through Way to Grow. Uh, and I will bring a book over to you since we're pretty close here in downtown and have you sign it. And then we have a pen, a rotary pen for you to keep uh, as a remembrance of your speaking with us today. So we really appreciate your being here. Uh, thank you again, this was a really great and a, a, a good session to have at this time uh, when I really do feel like downtown is coming uh, back to life again. Uh, so thank you.
Adam, Adam, Sean Irwin again, on May the second at Cephas's Brewing, we'd love to have you or uh, someone from your organization join us for our networking event as we look to revitalize downtown together with you, so.
It sounds great, if I can be there, I will. And if I have a conflict or something, I'll make sure somebody, somebody's there for it from our organization.
That would be great, we'd appreciate it. Thanks so much, Adam. And thank, thank you to Brock for uh, really taking on a whole host of duties today as doing the reflection and being our Zoom master. Uh, and thank you Christine Dennis for being our day chair today. Next week, we are still Zoom only, so March thirteenth, Zoom only. Uh, we're going to hear from Dean Rasul Hadidi about the future of work in the age of generative AI. So that is another presentation you aren't going to want to miss. Then on March twentieth, we are back to the Women's Club uh, for a live uh, meeting uh, with Hennepin County Sheriff DeWanna Witt, which you aren't going to want to miss that either. So again, next week, March thirteenth, Zoom only. All right, all of you, have a great Rotary week.